The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
We're going to reconvene into open session. Do we need to take a real call? No, no, okay. This is the regular board meeting for February 27, 2023, and we don't have to do a real call. And so then would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the mission statement, James.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you very much. And then next, we have our land acknowledgement statement, which I'll read. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Monominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of One Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. Okay. And next, so next on our agenda is our InterCity Student Council Report. I believe our students are joining us virtually. Macy? Sawyer? Okay. Whoever's going to be doing the report, just go ahead and speak up. Go ahead, Brian.
Can I make a motion that we adjust the agenda to the, to move item 3A to the end of the meeting if possible?
To the very end? That could be hours.
Okay, to just before presentations, before 6A.
Before 6?
With flexibility.
Second.
Just before 6A, so let me just make a note.
It's not very long, but we'll just make another motion.
Okay, just before presentations. Okay, and there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We're going to move on now to recognition. I got it. Just, I got it. I got a little statement here. Bear with me. Travis? Oh, please, please do. Okay. I'd like to invite Chrome President and Creative Director Shelley Long and her team forward to be recognized. If you'd like to just come up to the table. Join us, please. Welcome. Go ahead. Sure. Okay. So Shelley, could you please introduce your team? Oh, yeah. Can you turn on the microphone, please? Hit the little face. There you go. Excellent. Thank you.
You would think, being in video production, I would know that.
We do it all the time, so don't, don't, yeah.
So once again, Catherine Ames, who's a former teacher, now retired from the Green Bay area public schools, and Travis Vandenhove.
Very good.
Kennedy Lombardi, Green Bay Southwest.
Excellent.
Webster Alaway, Edison, Washington, Green Bay East High School, and my mother was a teacher for 35 years.
Whoa, excellent.
You were on the list as well.
I didn't attend. I only taught. And I made lists of schools working with different ones, it was like 20.
Would you like to turn on your microphone, too? Yeah. It's a little face. Yeah, when you, when you speak, though, that'll turn on the other one, so you have that. It forces you to take turns.
Okay, so yes, I'm Catherine Ames. I just retired from the GBA PS after 31 years. Retired two years ago. Yes, so it was a wonderful career, and I jumped ship to join this wonderful team.
Okay. Well, tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize Chrome, advertising and design agency in Green Bay that for the past 16 years has donated a poster to every GBAP's elementary classroom. Chrome has designed and printed the posters in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy. Beyond the posters, in 2020, they created a mural of that year's poster in Sullivan Elementary's renovated comments for the students to enjoy for many years. I've seen that. This year, our elementary schools received three different designs from which to choose. We value the support of our schools by Chrome and appreciate their efforts to inspire our students and promote diversity and social justice in our schools and our community. So I'm going to come over by you.
You want us to stand?
Go ahead and stand up.
It's a little live concert.
Thank you very much. And Lori wants to take a picture. And we will do it 16 more years, I promise. And we try to do it a little different after a year. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Please leave your name and telephone number, and I will call you back as soon as I can. Thank you. Your message is too short. Please try again. To leave a callback number, press.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And so we've all got a copy, I believe, here. I shall look at when I get home. Next on the agenda is our public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Kinsey, do we have someone remote? Okay, all right. Yeah. So we're trying to contact that person right now? Okay. Okay.
Hello?
Hello, can you please state your name? And you have five minutes. State your name and address. I'm sorry, your name and address, sorry.
Teresa Waldkirk, Ada A Mandalay Terrace, De Pierce.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm calling in, and thank you for having me regarding the Medicare primary 50% rate hike. And I sent the board a copy of some of the points that I'm making tonight. I apologize first for not being more prepared with factual information on Medicare rules and regulations, but the turnaround from my finding the rate increase to today's meeting was very short. So a little background, I retired in 2011 with full benefits, which included an escrow account that was the maximum allowed at the time. It was the maximum because I'm dedicated to my students and to the district, and I don't take sick leave or personal time when it's not absolutely necessary. Despite going through elder care and some major medical issues in the last two years, I'll be leaving almost all of my sick leave on the table when I leave, buyout or not. So that was a benefit that saved the district a lot of money, but more importantly, it served the students in my district. So now the time has come for me to use that benefit. And the, well, first of all, when I rehired in 2012, I wanted to use it for the 62% insurance copay that I had, but I was told that that wouldn't be allowed. But I thought, no problem, I'll use it when I retire. So technically, of course, I can still use it. But realistically, with the rates that are proposed, and there's no stopping the district from continuing to up it every year, that's not really very realistic. So my questions are, even if we go technically, isn't group insurance based on the spreading of risk across age groups? I didn't use insurance for decades, and I didn't mind paying because others needed it. So the second question is, is the 50% rate hike being only applied to Medicare primary, is that really an age discrimination issue, seeing as how other retirees pre-65, their rate is only increasing 10%? So let's say I do decide to leave the Green Bay insurance and not pay those rates. Then Green Bay has taken the equivalent of half of my salary for a year and absorbed it because I have no way to use the escrow money that I had earned. So I proposed that I be allowed and the escrow rules be changed because you can't. You're changing the rates of the insurance so that I could use that money to pay a supplemental monthly rate. And as I understood the attorney when we talked last week, the answer was no because we can't service, we don't have anybody to service the documentation, and errors would put the whole district in jeopardy, which I can understand. Yet, we contract for servicing Medicaid billing, which we do monthly as speech pathologists, and M3 we pay as a consultant, so I don't really see that as an answer. So I'm investigating how all of this is done for my siblings and friends with lifetime benefits from other districts or communities, and that's what I'm proposing to you tonight. We talk endlessly about what's equitable and ethical in our schools and in our communities. We try and teach respect for the elderly and the infirmed, which, by the way, that moniker of elderly applied to me as a new thing. I've not had to use it before, but I guess I'm in that vulnerable category now. And we're not going because it's the law. We're not teaching them it's the law. We're teaching it because it's the honorable thing to do. So I understand the district's push to get older retirees such as me off the plan, especially those of us using it. We've served our purpose for Green Bay now, and we're really only a liability. And I don't know if my bringing these things up is going to change one iota. But at least I've had my voice heard. I believe it's inequitable. I also believe it's dishonorable. But with all that said, and if I leave under those terms, the rest of my career with Green Bay has been wonderful. I've worked with wonderful people, wonderful families, and I know that Green Bay is facing a lot of problems coming forward, financial problems, and I wish them the best. But I hope that they don't, that they don't give up the image that they've had before, and they do the right thing with us retirees. So thank you for your attention, and I appreciate the time.
And thank you very much for sharing your thoughts. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay. I think that's all that we have tonight for open forum. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda approval. Would someone like to read the motion? Okay.
I'm on the wrong thing, sorry. I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, yes, go ahead, Vicky.
Thank you. If the weather had been a little bit better, we would have some of the folks that were just in the consent agenda here in person. But I wanted to take a second to acknowledge Melinda Kapanos, Matt Malkor, Jenna Paul, and Andrea Fisher, who I believe are joining us virtually right now. If you are, if you could put your cameras on for just one second. That's Andrea, Jenna, Matt, and Melinda. These are our new principals for the 23-24 school year. Melinda will be at Eisenhower. Matt will be at King. Jenna at Beaumont, and Andrea at Fort Howard. And you can't see them, so.
Normally, they'd be in the room, and we could acknowledge them and welcome them aboard, but yeah, tonight is not going to be one of those nights unfortunately, so, okay. All right, thank you, Vicky. Oh, wait a minute. Is it there?
Andrea, it sounds like I said Fisher instead of Freeze. Sorry about that. Andrea, Jenna, Matt, Melinda, if you are able to put your cameras on for a second, please go ahead and do so. There they are.
My, this is Andrea. My camera's not working.
Okay, that's okay. Congratulations, team. We have high expectations for next school year, no pressure. But I'm sure you're going to make a great difference. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to move that we bump the InterCity Student Council Report again to the, let's try between 7F and 7G.
Second.
Okay, Brian, I'm going to put you in charge of reminding us when we get to that point, okay? All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we're going to do that. All right, now I think we're going to do the legislative report, our update, and that would be done by James.
Thank you, Laura. All right, so there is a document that's available to the public and to the board out there. I'm not going to read it. I'm just going to highlight. So thanks, and I want to recognize Lori Blaksey from the district for synthesizing information that is pertinent for our consumption. It's budget season, and the legislator is reconvened, and there are a couple items that are in the governor's budget. And she's been able to present how it impacts our district. And so what you see in red is really the primary focus of the update. So in the DPI budget, you'll see in bullet, the second bullet point down, a very large increase compared to what we expect of $1,000 per student, but it's split over the two years of the biennium. $350 in the first, in the second year, $650. You can see the impact to our budget of $6.5 million in the first year, increasing to $18.3 million in the second year. Also, it's my understanding that there is an additional low spend or low revenue district incentive of an additional $100 per year, and that's in the revenue limits. But we can't fail our friend, right? But I don't think that's an issue going forward for us at the moment. Categorical aid, there is an increase proposed of $24 in the first year of the biennium, and then raising it up to an ultimate $69 in the second year, which would impact the district of with $1.3 million. The document that you have in front of you, on the second page, kind of presents the reality. The Joint Finance Committee is 16 members, 12 of which are Republican legislators for Democratic legislators. And we have, since the writing of this document, met with Representative Kitchens, who is newly appointed Education Committee Chair. And in that meeting, we were able to kind of quiz him and get his perspective on the governor's budget, and it's a bridge too far, as it's, you know, in the eyes of a Republican majority. And for just an understanding of what that means, we talked about the increase to 60% in special education funding. And he indicated that they would be more inclined to pursue a small increase in special ed funding. So we touched on the topic of the large surplus, state surplus, and it is a perspective of legislators that that's really not a surplus, that it's spent its earmarked funds, and that it's just not laying there waiting for someone to collect it. That's, you know, it is probably a misnomer to refer to it and to treat it like that. And that's just a perspective. So I think they may be losing the storyline on that, and it's, I don't think that's how the public views that. But we are absolutely going to pursue, trying to advocate for the budget as the governor proposes it. Emphasis on the special education funding, which is a very large impact to us, as we all know that we transfer out of Fund 10 into that fund to cover the unfunded portion. So the WASB Lobby Day, there are a couple of us that are going to go and participate in that on March 22nd and to lobby for, you know, what we can get. So it was interesting in the conversation with Representative Kitchens, that the, and pretty familiar to members of the board, the way they actually process the budget, education seems to be last, right? So they go through and get all the ass because they know that this is the largest budgetary item. And so that leaves us in the position of not really knowing what there is until late in the cycle, which puts us into the summer months. But we'll do everything within our power. We'll continue to schedule meetings with representatives to pursue what can be pursued, right?
And I assume that the messaging that WASB is going to give for Lobby Day will be available to board members as well if we choose to cyberlobby as individuals.
I don't, I've not been a party to that before, but I'm sure that there will be talking points that we will receive and will be socialized in advance, yes. Probably campaigns initiated to do just that. Any other questions?
I'm just going to say that we have, to date, James and I and Vicky and Lori, we've met with Senator Coles, Senator Wimberger, Andre Jacques, Kitchens, Joel Kitchens just last week at Preble. Am I missing anybody? Okay. Okay. Oh, that's right, last summer, sorry. So this advocacy work is ongoing. It's never quite sure how impactful you're being. But we got to try because we owe it to our kids. And I will continue to do whatever we can to remind our legislators about how important the work is that we, that this district does on behalf of almost 20,000 students. So anyway, go ahead, Brian.
It's also good to note that I'm sure there's going to be other pro-public school groups advocating for the same budget goals on there, some that we've worked very closely with and continue to have good relationships with that are focusing on appropriately funding public education, the same bills that are spoken of on this, so.
And to be fair, when we talked about the increase in revenue limits, Representative Kitchens recognized that there has been a gap there for the last couple of years. And he didn't speak specifically to an amount, but he did at least communicate. He has no power, or he's not on the joint finance. But, you know, representing education, he recognizes that there's a need there, so.
I'm going to assume that legislators all over this state are hearing regularly from their constituents and people who work in public education because the anxiety level is really very high right now around funding and other things. All right, any other questions? Thank you, James. All right, we are going to now move on to the action items. The first on the agenda is high school world language resource adoption. Vicky, I think you wanted to say something there. Oh, sorry. Okay, would someone read the motion? Go ahead, Nancy.
I move that the course essential documents and resources for high school world language, as be presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay. Yep.
I'd like the board to please note that the recommendation for high school math resources is going to be tabled until the 23-24 school year. As Dr. Shartier had outlined at the work session two weeks ago, Phase 3 of the curriculum resource selection process focuses on feedback from our staff, and we are listening to the building staff. Our data certainly indicates that we need to make some changes. So we are committed to continuing to support instructional practices that best help student growth. As outlined in the memo that's attached to Board Docs, this additional time will allow for completion of the course. As outlined in the memo that's attached to Board Docs, this additional time will allow for completion of the course cleanup project. Current mathematics course selection examination to ensure equitable access for all of our students. Current mathematics course selection for alignment to students identified academic and career plans. And to provide for administrators and educators mathematics professional learning opportunities. On open up resources and instructional practices, we will continue that work. So I just wanted to note that before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All right, um Kinsey? Online voting is now open.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you, I just want to note. Uh for people who are watching, all of these items, we're gonna take a lot of votes now. All these items, we've had a chance to discuss um in our work session, there's opportunity tonight as well to to discuss or to ask questions. Um but this is gonna, the next um stretch here, we're gonna do, I will be taking a lot of votes, so, okay, um. Next, we're moving on to B, Elementary Keyboarding Resource Adoption, go ahead.
I move that the course essential documents and resources for elementary keyboarding as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next um is C, School Security Drills. Go ahead, Nancy.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section one-one-eight point zero-seven four CP. The written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, D, Secondary Desktop Request for Proposal.
I move that the purchase of the secondary desktop computers as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next, um Food Service Vendor Recommendation.
I move that performance food service be awarded as the primary, the prime vendor for an estimated cost of. Two million flat nine hundred thousand dollars for the first year of service as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next, Notice of Change in Adopted Budget.
I move that in accordance with the provisions of Wisconsin Statute sixty-five point nine zero five A. The adopted changes to the previously approved twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget amounts as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Okay. Uh next is Medical Plan.
Uh we didn't finish this one.
Oh.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
Like to make a motion to adjust the agenda to move original item three A.
Oh.
Oh, like I said, glad to have him here.
Hey, can you hear us?
Hello, can you guys hear? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh.
Go.
Thank, yeah.
Yeah, can you introduce yourselves, please?
All right, I'm Sawyer Mont, I'm the Vice President of InterCity Student Council. Um for our report today, we just have some good news. Um, for East, their Rhapsody in Red performed at a show choir competition. They are heading to a competition in Chicago this upcoming weekend. Primestor exams are next week. Their basketball seasons are du- their basketball season is done for girls, um and boys. Uh spring sports are about to begin. Multiple FBL, FBLA members are going to state. And last Wednesday at East, they had a event for black people to speak up, they had a hundred plus people. Quit five minutes to read a speech that was written by a black person. Um, at Preble, uh multiple de- multiple Decca members are going to state in Lake Geneva. They have FBLA regionals, um and half of the members of that are going to state as well. OZA members are going to state, ACT is next week. And uh two weeks, I believe, uh they have a choir concert on February twenty-seventh. They have a student council hosted blood drive that was last week, and they had solo ensemble this past weekend. At Southwest, they had Friday was their last Bureau's basketball game. Detroit, yes, are going to Nationals this weekend, and they are preparing for a show choir competition. At West, let me find West real quick, um. Des Mixon made it to the first ever individual uh woman's division at state for wrestling for girls. And she plays six there, their musical is Shrek, and it is showing the week of the seventh and the eighth. Uh they're, they also had a blood drive la- last week, and their snowball dance was great, and they had over fifty students go. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you for very much. Is there anybody else reporting out tonight, or is it just you?
Uh, it's just me.
Okay. Stacy?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't at the last InterCity Student Council meeting, so I don't really have much to report, so.
Okay. Very good, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to um G. Um I think Brian and Laura are gonna do these, the these next, this next group, so uh medical plan modification.
I move that the elimination of the five hundred dollar deductible plan, health plan as presented be approved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Andrew?
Um, which, which motion here? Actually covers the approval of what the. Overall plan is for next year, this is to remove one aspect of it. And the next one is to change co-pays, so where is the actual. The irony on the plan itself?
I I was selected to be the spokesperson today. I'm the only one here. There's two parts to the changes, Andrew, actually three parts, there's the elimination of the five hundred dollar plan. Then there is the adjustment to the co-pays, whether that be the five hundred dollar plan or the fifteen hundred dollar plan, those co-pays. Were the same across all, across both plans, so that's a separate motion. And then there are the individual motions, as you've seen in the years past, to adjust the rates. For the plan based on the utilization that we're recommending.
Okay, so we take last year's plan, exactly it was written. With the modification of removing the five hundred deductible plan, and. Then the next motion, the co-pay adjustments, and then the rates, those represent the entirety of the the changes?
That's correct.
Just to confirm, although the five hundred dollar deductible plan would be removed because it's fifteen hundred with a thousand dollar. HRA, that is mathematically. Identical from the perspective of the person spending, it's adds different process, but it is, or no?
The deductible is the same, that is correct.
So, but there is no, there's. There is no difference other than that they would see a thousand dollars, but they would have an HRA card. Or submit reimbursements to use it, is that right?
There, there is a change in the max out of pocket, and that was covered at last week's uh at the work session. The max out of pocket in the five hundred dollar plan is lower than the fifteen hundred dollar plan. But you were given the various different statistics of how many people actually reach that max out of pocket in the five hundred dollar plan. As well as that um picture graphic as to how the max out of pocket affects individuals. Based on the ninety-ten coinsurance.
Okay, I think, I think my other questions go to a a different one of these motions.
Any other questions, go ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to make a statement with it, um, once again, this has been done in collaboration with different employee groups. Having a seat at the table, they spent a significant amount of time on this as well as with um members of the cabinet. But this has been done in collaboration with them.
So we've had, we have a benefit advisory committee that we've had a number of meetings. In addition, we have had um other meetings with the different employee groups here in the district as well. Who have also had meetings with their individual groups, and then we've had meetings with cabinet and executive cabinet as well. And with um the advisement of M three and um including their benchmark data and their research. Any other questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you, next is Medical Plan Co-Pay Adjustments.
I move that the recommended modifications to the co-pays for the medical plan as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion, questions, go ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to add a couple of things on a couple of these votes, I'm going to be abstaining because my family participates in some of the benefits with my wife being an employee in the district, so.
Thank you. But, um, Andrew?
Um if I remember correctly, at the last um when we had the presentation, we were. Although deductibles were increasing, we were um, we had a below average deductible, which is good on everything. Except um except for ER visits, we went above the average deductible, I I think it was two fourteen. Um, I, I have a problem with a, with a two hundred fifty dollar deductible for ER. It just, it stands out, it's, it's very high, it's, I believe it's higher than the average. Um, I'm going to make a motion to amend the co-pay adjustments by changing the uh ER. The emergency room deductible from two fifty to two hundred. I'm gonna make a second on that, just so it gets the ability for a vote.
Discussion. Go ahead, Melissa. So you, you had the benchmark data, it is within the benchmark, in addition to that, if you are admitted into the hospital. The two hundred fifty dollar co-pay is waived, we also have the urgent care, um. If you use your purveyor partnered health or your Bell in your site, the urgent care has zero dollar deductible, so there. Unless you need to go it to the ER in the middle of the night when there's no urgent cares open. There would, you always have that alternative to have the um. To have that opportunity to go to the urgent care and and not go to the emergency room. And again, if you do go to the emergency room and you're admitted, then that two hundred fifty dollar co-pay is waived. Thank you.
What about when you go to the urgent care and they send you to the emergency room? And you get checked over and it was fine, then you're out, you're to, you're at the two fifty. As it's, it seems, it just seems awfully, it's, it's a large, it's a large jump, and it's a move that puts us above the. Um, it's a move that puts us above the average, not ridiculously above the average, but the other deductibles are below.
What is the average?
I thought, I thought it was two fourteen was the the benchmark for ER, am I wrong?
I don't have the exact figures in front of me because of that, this wasn't raised earlier as a concern, so I don't, I did not bring that tonight, I apologize. There were a lot of figures, the one thing that I do want to point out is that um if. If there is a change to that two hundred and fifty dollar co-pay, that affects the entire rate structure. So I would then have to ask you to table every other motion going forward, because we would have to go back and have the actuaries. Adjust the rates for the, all the other plans, because it's a formula. And so when you move one number, it affects every, all the other numbers as well, and ER visits. In this district are high, and they have driven up our utilization, and they have driven up the cost of the plan. Go ahead.
Misconsent to withdraw my amendment? I mean, I'll ask the chair to ask unanimous consent to withdraw my.
Okay, all in favor? I.
I.
Opposed, okay, it's withdrawn. All right, um we're back to the motion, any other questions or discussion, go ahead, Nancy.
So it's this part with the co-pays where the prudent RX is involved.
Prudent RX is, well, yes. Yeah, um, yes, with respect to the prescription, yes.
If, at the beginning, when you get this and you, you have a medical condition and you want it, you sign up for it. What happens if you don't have it, and then you get one, can you still sign up later on?
Yes, anytime you would be um prescribed one of the drugs that are on that tier. You are eligible for prudent RX to sign up at that point, if at any time, to Andrew's question last week. If at any time the prudent RX um formulary would drop that because of the manufacturer discounts. Then it goes back to that fifty dollar co-pay that exists currently for that prescription. Okay. Any other questions, any concerns? All right, Kinsey, I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried, the results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Leighton Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is I, health insurance plan rates for active employees.
I moved that the, excuse me, that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four health insurance rates for the fifteen hundred dollar deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account and the minimum essential plan for active employees as presented be approved.
Second. Questions? Andrew?
Um, so I had requested and I, I don't believe I saw it in email, but we, I, I asked for the uh, not, I asked for M three to provide the average, uh, what the average actual um health spend per family is, not, not just premiums, but what actuarially of a family in a single would spend because that's important to judge the totality of what we're doing. Is that, was that ever made available?
No, because it doesn't exist. So there is no, there is no average spend for the plan. A family plan could be a family plan of three, it could be a family plan of nine. It could be a family plan with no significant health issues. It could be a family plan where everyone in the family is a type one diabetic. It could be a family plan where there's multiple sclerosis. It could be a family plan where everyone has a different autoimmune disease and they're all on the prudent R X tier of drugs. Could be a family that everyone has had cancer. So there, there is no typical family plan, and even if they did an average, it's a meaningless number.
So, but almost everything you just said, all of those things would be a very simple, straight answer that the, all those things would be maximum out of pocket. Pretty much. So there is, there is a statistic called actuarial value where we determine where the, do we have that? Because that essentially is the converse of what you can derive one from the other.
What we presented was the three different versions of what we are allowed to present with respect to what U M R has provided for us, given the, those three different experiences and what the spend would be under the existing plan, the existing five hundred dollar plan, and then the conversion to the fifteen hundred dollar plan.
Okay, I was told by the M three rep that was I not that, yes, I understand your question and I'll get you the answer and it was not given. I, I didn't get it. I mean, usually it would be given to everyone or put in a memo or something, so.
I believe what was provided was the information that we are able to provide based on the work of the actuaries and what you're asking for. And I, and I know Andrew having sat here for this presentation every year that I understand the importance of it to you and that you have asked for year after year, but we have, we haven't been able to provide it because it simply doesn't exist.
I, I think, I think I can show that it has been provided or the actual actuarial value percentage has been provided, which is a another way of saying the, another way of saying the same thing. I do, um, I do appreciate the, the work of the district. And uh, not every district is collaborative with um, with staff these days. Many are not and they just do it top down and we didn't. So my vote on this will reflect the fact that I'm just not convinced enough without the information I was told that I was going to get from the insurance broker that um, I didn't get, so.
We, we did share the tiered cost with how many members are in each range in the spend for each of those tiered costs. And that range of claim spend is how many people are in that range. So that is what we were able to provide ba- based on the work of the actuaries. So you do have that. Where, in each of those tiers, how many families fall within each of those ranges? James? I'm sorry, did you, no, I thought you had a question. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Any other discussion, any other questions? Go ahead, James.
But so I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the difference between actuarial value and the premium. Right? Both employer and the employee portion of the premium, because in a self-funded plan, that is actuarial value because it's a non, it's not the profit plan, right? So I don't, I'm trying, because like when you put a Cobra premium out there for an H R A, the premium is basically the actuarial value of the plan. So I'm trying to determine what you're after. They've done their work. They came up with a premium, right? I, I don't, I can't differentiate that from what you're asking, right? There's no, if, if you're thinking there's a math error or they're hiding something in there, I just, I, I'm having a hard time understanding the difference.
It's the same thing that's used to determine if um a marketplace plan is gold, gold, silver, bronze, the actuar, does it pay ninety percent of expected health? Does it pay eighty percent? Does it pay seventy? Now, I, and I know I've gotten that number in other years before and I was, it was quite good. It was ninety something.
But that's different. That's minimum loss ratio. And minimum loss ratio is for a for-profit organization to prove that at a gold level, you're spending eighty cents on the dollar for claims, but we don't have that threshold because we're self-funded. Right? So I don't understand the difference. I, I think that the premium and the actual ver- actuarial value in this situation are kind of one in the same.
Brian?
That was actually my point. Actually, I was just stalling so you could have some time to get your thoughts together, James, so.
Thank you. Okay. All right, um, anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Jay. Are we on Jay?
I think we're on I.
I, okay, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Like I said, we're on J. All right. I moved that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four health insurance rates for the fifteen hundred deductible health plan with the health reimbursement account, the minimum essential plan and the prescription plan for retirees as presented be approved.
Second. Okay. Go ahead, Melissa. If I could just speak to the comments that were made earlier with respect to the plan for Medicare eligible retirees. So we, uh, I appreciate that the um e- employee gave us her comments ahead of time so that we were able to look into her concerns and I can offer the following. I, I know that the speaker was concerned that maybe we were not spreading the risks across for purposes of insurance. I just want to remind the board that the utilization for that group of employees, for our employees who are Medicare eligible, the utilization was over five hundred percent. And so if we were to do the actual increase to the plan of what the, the utilization for the, that premium would be, it would be much higher than the increase to the premium that we're proposing because it, again, the actives are still subsidizing the individuals who are the retirees on the plan. There's a significant utilization in those plans. The speaker also raised us a question of, as to whether this would be discriminatory and whether we are permitted to do that. The, the fact remains that we don't have to offer retiree insurance. We're not legally obligated to do that. But we could, we do that because under the collective bargaining agreement, when people retired, they were given that benefit and this board is not interested in taking that away. But given the increase of the cost of the plan and the significant utilization, that is what is forcing our hand in needing to raise those rates. And again, we're still not charging what the actual rates should be if they were properly priced based on the utilization. The, unfortunately, people continue to, or fortunately, people use what is known to them and what is comfortable to them. So our retirees who are Medicare eligible continue to stay on the plan as their primary, when in fact it should not be used as a primary. They really need a Medicare supplement and they would be paying a lot less. We have worked with our retirees to um, get some resources and offer a number of different uh, learning opportunities for them in order to move off the plan. The speaker talked about escrow. The purpose of escrow that was um, created way before my time was to be that bridge for our employees before you were Medicare eligible, so that you had some sort of retirement funding for insurance when you retired at the point of the end of your career in order to pay for insurance before you were eligible to get on that Medicare. And it was never the intent of escrow to be essentially a, a cash plan that would then be used um for whatever insurance you wanted to be on or for co-pays or, or that sort of thing. Of course, we sincerely appreciate everything that our retirees do when they come back to work with us and if they have to hold that escrow while they go back on the insurance plan. But we would, we would be converting what the purpose of that escrow is and that was really the point that we had discussed. And a minor point is the I R S complications, but there really is trying to stay true to that intent of what those escrow dollars were intended for. Okay. Any other questions regarding this motion, Brian?
I assume the education parts of it and uh, outreach to the retired members is still ongoing in that there's many groups working with them on that.
So we, um, communication is going to go out tomorrow to all employees. We are setting up a separate um, learning opportunity online and virtual for our snowbirds who are still in much better weather than we are here today uh, to have that, that learning opportunity. M three has a person specifically hired to provide insur- insurance information to retirees. We cannot advise individuals with respect to Medicare. But uh, uh, M three has an individual that they refer out to who can provide that information to individuals who are Medicare eligible. Andrew?
Um, I'd just like to reconfirm from last week that um to the best of, the best of our knowledge, in every case where some even, even before, even without a premium increase, in, in every case, someone who is paying for our retiree plan who's Medicare eligible now, in every single case, they're with the Medicare Advantage or whatever type, they would have been able to do better financially. Is that correct? Except I think they said there was one that was maybe a break even, but that was only about a break even.
That, to our understanding, based on the individuals that have been worked with, that is correct.
And James was right on actuarial value on the last one. I, that's why I voted yes on the last one. And I'm going yes on this one because it would be a no except for the fact that really it's, it is better and it's not better for some. It's not better for eighty percent and twenty percent are going to be hurting. It's really really, everybody will be better off on their spend if they don't take our plan. And even then, we're still letting you take it.
To be clear, we are kicking no one off the plan. And if you start out as a retiree at Medicare eligible on the plan, you are still eligible to move to a supplemental plan without having underwriting apply. Okay, any further questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is K. Dental insurance rate for active employees.
K, I move that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four dental insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second? Oh, you, you, okay, you're abstaining, okay. All right, any questions? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills abstain.
Next, dental insurance rates for retirees.
I moved that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four dental insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Second. Questions? Go ahead.
I think I may have to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Well done. Okay.
I will.
Okay. Any, any other discussion or questions? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch abstain. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes.
Go ahead, Brian.
Nancy, do you need to go back and change any of your other ones for retirees or no?
All right. Next, M voluntary vision insurance for active employees.
I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three vision insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second. Okay, discussion, questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills abstain.
Okay. And voluntary vision insurance for retirees.
I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three vision insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch abstain. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes.
Thank you. Next. Flexible spending and health reimbursement account administration.
I move that the contract with diversified benefit services incorporated as flexible spending account and health reimbursement account. flexible spending account and health reimbursement account administrator be extended as presented be approved.
Second.
Go ahead, James.
Be abstaining uh my, my employment provides these services.
Okay. Just, anyone who's watching this, we're, we're getting there. We're getting close to the end now. Any other discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly abstain. Mills, yes.
Thank you. Next, recommendation for revisions to employee handbook language regarding reduction in force. Someone want to do the motion? Okay.
I move that the revisions to the employee handbook language regarding reduction in force is presented be approved.
Second? Questions? Andrew?
Um, I just want to say that I'm very pleased after um after a couple of years where reduction in force had uh essentially um, you know, one or more of these factors was the language and there were many reasons that things didn't have to go in a particular order uh that our current administration uh requested this review and that we now have the same, the same types of rules that um would be, would be expected, that it's, it's attrition and then it's voluntary. And then um, it would be selected primarily, primarily based on length of service with some necessary things regarding having licenses and so forth. Um, it was a very um, I sure I, if if it was presented to us, I'm sure I voted no on, I would have voted no on on that uh last um prior, but this administration got it straightened out. So, thank you.
Brian?
Just wanted to say once again, it shows the collaboration and as we're entering some difficult times here, the collaboration that took place between the groups and it's, it's another strength of our district. I'm going to be abstaining on this, even though I'm sure I don't need to, just because, like I said, with a spouse that's an employee of the district, but another good job, so.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, if I could just add, um, I really appreciate Melissa's leadership on this and uh Lori Myron and her team for making this happen. They saw that it needed to be cleaned up and and put a lot of work into this, so thank you.
Just ballpark how many meetings you had on this, Melissa?
You don't have to do that. You don't have to answer that if you don't want to. I just know it was a lot of meetings over, over months.
But I echo what everyone has said tonight. It it takes a while to get that done, but it's the right process and it produces the best product, so I I appreciate everyone recognizing that.
Yeah, I would agree, so, okay. Everybody to vote? Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills abstain.
Okay. Next is Q um Policy one sixty-four Board, School Board Member Compensation and Expenses. And, yeah, that's going to be done, Andrew.
Yep. I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy one sixty-four School Board Member Compensation and Expenses is presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, Melissa, do you mind just kind of giving a small synopsis of what we're voting on here for anyone who might still be watching us?
The current language that is in the policy requires an annual review and um there was a a motion that wasn't included in the, in the policy but tied the board's increase to the CPI increase. Uh, that will be your next motion that you're making with respect to that. By clarifying the language in the, the policy, it provides better flexibility for the board and doesn't tie your hands to that CPI and allows you uh timing with respect to that increase.
Okay, very good. All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Um, next is R. School Board Member Compensation for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I move that pursuant to the Board of Education Policy one sixty-four, the School Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Board compensation shall not be adjusted, increased or decreased for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year as presented be approved.
Second? I just want to say that this is a, a basically the board, the the school board hitting a pause button and uh giving a raise this year, um, knowing that we're going into a a um, what we already are in a time of uh kind of fiscal austerity and um in the future is a little, a little bit uh uncertain, so we are going to um make this change for um the next um, the next year. Any other discussion or questions? Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Okay. Next is um S Master Facility Plan Evaluation Framework.
I move that the Master Facility Plan Evaluation Framework as presented be approved and shared with the facility's Master Planning Task Force.
Okay. Questions? Discussion? Andrew?
Um. So we, we had some discussion about this a couple of weeks ago. I have, I guess, one, one question for Josh and then a more general question. So when we say number five, the resulting plan should target reducing operational costs by ten percent. That's ten percent in today's dollars, understanding inflation will change that, or is that a projected out?
That's a really good question. Act, um, we're just beginning to work on the costing of um various scenarios and A T S and R's methodology basically starts at twenty twenty-seven and then projects out ten years with inflationary factors um to determine the costs and savings of, of each particular scenario. So yes, inflation should be built in.
Okay, because it would be to, to cut ten percent uh off of today's dollars, knowing that not only are you cutting, but also there's inflation. Okay, so that's a comment for us. So that's, I have a follow-up here. My next follow-up is is that um is that really reachable because you're not, there's not that much the most staff roughly corresponds with student levels, right? We talked about there's some administrative differences and some clerical differences and some maintenance, but most, mostly um uh, so it's those, a few people plus a utility bill for every consolidated building. Not that a utility bill is a minor thing, but um, as long as we're sure that the, the ten, you know, the ten percent is possible. And then the other thing was um we are, no- none of these are, none of these are hard rules and the words consider and guidance were carefully chosen to be not directive in nature to the committee. They're, right? And so given that um I think this is good, good guidance to to him.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Josh.
I do think that ten percent goal is, is achievable. Um, I mean, ultimately, that's going to be at the discretion of the, of the task force, but I think that you know, we, our preliminary numbers show that um that many of the scenarios should be to get to that ten percent mark.
Right? Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
I just want to take a moment to thank James up for working so much on this. I think there was quite a few versions of this and there, um, pretty much every word was considered carefully. And um, I just wanted to say a public thank you. All right. Um. Finally is uh T. Preble High School Architecture and Engineering Services.
I move that A T S and R be awarded the bid for the engineering and design services for an estimated cost of seven hundred twenty-three, seven hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, five and a half percent of the total cost of construction as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead, James.
I know that this may or may not be aligned, but uh, a narrative was presented around the course selection. I thought we were going to see two of these, or am I mistaken? I thought there was one for Preble and one for West. And did we vote on West last time?
Yes, you voted on West the last, yes, at the last special board meeting. Um, this was, this was not brought to you during the work session as R F P closed last Thursday.
Okay. Okay. All right, any more questions or discussion? Um, all right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Very good, thank you. Thank you all for your patience. Anyone who's still with us online, um, thanks for sticking with us through all that. Um. All right, I think that's it, folks. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.